Mayor. Mayor?
Mayor, Councilmember Robinson?
Ra, I'm here.
Councilmember Siemens?
President.
Councilmember Snapper?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Okay, and I guess we'll just have to kind of speak slowly for a second till the city manager gets back in. Figured we're... Thank you. Thank you. We're having a little trouble getting rolling here. We're... We were upstairs for an administrative function session and we're all here, but now we can get going. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Clay?
The only comment that I have tonight is to let folks know that I have made a request to the city to make some minor modifications to the Long Branch Sligo traffic calming tests for the purposes of responding to some of the safety issues that are related to the way that the test is operated. And I hope that we're able to address that in the near future. And if anyone has anything to say about it, you can certainly address your comments to me at colleenc c, C-O-L-L-E-E-N-C, at tacoma.gov.org. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Just want to remind everyone out there on March 19th, there will be a session to discuss the metro development. The open house starts at 6:00 AM here.
PM.
6:00 PM. 6:00 AM would be really tough, actually. 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And we'll go to 8:30, so it'll be an open house and then the session will fall. So I encourage people really to come and express their opinions and feelings about the metro development. And then the second thing is I just want to say a big thank you to Barb and Chief Rucucci for coming to the North Tacoma Citizens Association meeting last week on Wednesday. Had a very productive meeting. Chief Rucucci and Barb were great in answering questions and discussing with constituents the issues around streetlights crime and also traffic on Chicago and Philadelphia and Philadelphia and Piney Branch. Pepco, the performance by the Pepco representative was less than stellar in terms of responsiveness to people's questions and leaving me at least with a feeling of confidence that Pepco was really organized and was going to resolve the issues in the short term or even the long term, really, so.
Councilmember Robinson?
I have a Pepco story too. I'm on a crusade to get all of the Pepco lights, all the Pepco streetlights in our city as energy efficient as possible to replace all the old ones. And I accosted, stopped, questioned just a regular Pepco guy on the street in Sycamore over the weekend and asked him if he had any opinion on that. And he said, well, he noticed that people are resistant to replacing incandescents with compact fluorescents because they feel that the compact fluorescent, or the incandescent still has a lot of life in it, so why bother replacing it? Why not just let it burn out and then replace it? But he himself was amazed that how short sighted that was in that the savings of energy and the cost of that energy would far outweigh the remainder, or the differential in cost between the incandescent and the compact fluorescent. And I think that that's an important point and one that we could use to make a little model for how much energy would be saved by replacing the existing Pepco streetlights for the remainder, make a comparison with leaving the Pepco streetlights in place and how much money would be saved from a energy consumption point of view over the life, et cetera. And I don't know how easy that or hard that little formula would be, but it's another piece of the puzzle as far as I'm concerned.
And if I could just add on that point that there is a report that the city had done on lighting in general and streetlights in particular. I want to say in the year 2000 Deborah Sax was the consultant and the director of Public Works would be able to put her hands on that report if the clerk's office can't. And there was a good analysis in there with some, and it wasn't just, if there was general analysis, there was also analysis particularly based on observations in Tacoma Park. Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all face the challenge of increasing prices because of the gasoline price increase and the effect that that has on the price of food and many of the other retail products that we purchase, I would ask that we all keep in mind the special needs of those of our neighbors who are on very limited incomes and fixed incomes. Today, for the first time, I had one of my constituents tell me that she wasn't going to be able to attend a meeting that she wanted to go to because she didn't have any gas and didn't have any money to buy gas. And it reminded me of the challenges that some people are really facing now.
Councilmember Barry?
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. If you can't see your television screen, very well, tonight it's time to cut off the Guinness. If you're fortunate enough to be watching this program from an Irish pub, please don't throw the empties at the flat screen television. Get a life. And then segueing to gypsy moth spraying. We've had a few telephone calls in the neighborhood because Montgomery County will be spraying for gypsy moth infestation through most of Ward 6. This will be the last part of April, beginning of May. I'm told that the spray is non-toxic, not harmful to human beings, and that might be good to have a swig of Guinness right after the spraying happens. But I think as it occurred a few years ago, last time the malls were sprayed, it happens usually very early on a Saturday morning. It sounds a bit like Apocalypse Now with the low-flying aircraft and helicopters, but they do a very good job and it has saved the trees and it will save them again. And if you do have questions about the spraying schedule, please contact me and I'll provide you with that information. Plus, we'll give you a heads up as the day grows closer and we know for sure when that spraying will happen.
And I believe that will be in a number of areas throughout the city, not just in Ward 6. And I just wanted to ask the city manager if we can get a little bit more information about the work that the WSSC contractors are doing. I came up with a question today as I observed them doing what I think is the final step on the 300 block of Lincoln. It appears that the patching that is happening in the areas that they have previously dug out or areas that need to be repaired where they're just cutting the top coat, it appears that they're doing about a six-inch layer of asphalt followed by a two-inch top coat. And some of the areas that they're doing that in, on either side of the cut, there is a concrete base rather than an asphalt base. And wondering what our agreement is with WSSC about whether those areas where they're going through concrete get replaced with concrete for the base or whether there's a substitute of asphalt, the work that happened today. It would appear that the answer is they filled in with asphalt between the two sides of concrete. That's not the sense that I got from the WSSC inspector last week. And I hope that's not what they're supposed to be doing. I also have a question about whether they or the city will be sealing the... Ah, there's the person who might answer. Talking about WSSC and patching. And the question, and I'll repeat it a little bit, so Barb wrote a good bit of it. But my observation today on the 300 block of Lincoln was that as they're going back with what appears to be the final patch in the road, there are areas where they went through concrete base on both sides, but they have filled in their trench with an asphalt base that will be followed by an asphalt top coat. Wondering whether that is what they're supposed to be doing as a general policy, whether we have any understanding or agreement with them on that and also whether they will be doing any sealing of their final patch with the remaining road. I know that as we have done and other, maybe even WSSC contractors have done patches in the road, there is sealing of the patch to the main part. And if the 200 block of Lincoln has already been finished with the final, it's been through a winter season of no patch. And my sense was that's going to let the moisture back down in and start rapid deterioration. So just wondering about a sense of what our agreement is with WSSC.
My recollection, there are cases where we require them to go back with concrete base. We did that, for instance, on Maple Avenue. My understanding of Lincoln Avenue is I don't think the entire street was a concrete base. There may have been some concrete areas that were utility patches.
Right.
So they are no longer putting concrete base on, nor do I think we required them to do concrete base in cases where the road base itself is not concrete. They are required to do CR6 and compaction and they provide us with compaction testing. That's fairly new within the last year and a half that we've required in our permits. So they provide us with compaction testing when they're filling the trench. I have had some conversations with the WSSC inspector about the patching job. Generally speaking, when they're putting a patch down, they use tack coat on both the bottom and the sides. So generally, my understanding is they don't seal the cut edge of that patch. I may be mistaken. I know we oftentimes will go by in our spring and summer crack filling and treat the edges of those patches, not only new ones, but existing ones to try to prolong the life and keep the water out from the surface down into the cut.
Not the answers I wanted to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Because my sense from looking today as they pulled the old patch out, I could see, you know, 30 or 40 feet of street that had concrete on both sides, which seems like it's not a patch, it's a base. And so we're ending up with inferior base where we already had a pretty sketchy base.
Well, if the compaction is done right, the base should hold. And most streets in the city, even the ones that we rebuilt basically and excavated six inches and replaced with four inches of base. If you have a four-inch asphalt base, that should be substantially sound unless there's something wrong with the subgrade beneath. And so we're hoping with the requirement of the compaction and use of CR6 and other materials that should be a solid base for which the road to stay solid.
Okay, well, I'll cross my fingers. Thank you. Any other comments? I just have a brief couple of things to mention for additional agenda items. At scheduling update, we don't have any additional agenda items. One thing I wanted to mention under the scheduling update is my sense, having met with Councilmember Wright and the vice president provost at Montgomery College, Brad Stewart, today was that their timing of their consultants and the feedback process that the college is going to have on their facilities' master plan is that it would be good for the city to have comments into that process no later than our meeting of May 5th, which isn't all that long from now. So that we will need to get things scheduled to basically consider the report from McNAC and from residents and whoever else is interested and come up with something that we can give to the college for input into that process. Also, I wanted to remind folks that next Monday, we're going to have the continued discussion of the city committees. And on a week from Saturday, March 29th, it's the City Council and Recreation Tour of Green Belt Recreation Facilities. And it looks like April 21 will be the start of our briefings from county council member Valerie Urban.
Yeah, is the continuing discussion of council priorities coming up again soon?
Yes. Don't ask me when.
Wouldn't think of it.
Since I was in Annapolis for nine hours on last Tuesday, I didn't have my agenda meeting with the city manager, I didn't have office hours, I didn't have anything on Tuesday last week except city business. So there has been no change. Next item is public comment.
I have one other question. Do we have a date when the county's going to come and talk about the elementary school?
We have a tentative date.
I know we have the data, I saw the data around when the resolution would come forward, but I didn't see on there when.
Maybe that, I know we had it, it moved, and the, you're right, I don't see it on here.
April 14th, there's a date for the resolution commenting on it, but we don't.
I will... Find that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Then it's the city manager's report.
Just a few quick items. Last week, we had a delegation from Ireland come over and tour the city. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the councilmember Siemens and councilmember Barry who were able to join us and to kind of share their experiences as an elected official in Tacoma Park. They were kind enough to leave some very nice gifts, some Irish crystal and some other items. And we're looking to see if we can get a display case because whenever we have these delegations come from other countries, they're always kind enough to leave some mementos from their homeland. So we're going to try to see if we can find an appropriate way to display the gifts that we are receiving when we have international visitors.
And when do we go on our international junkets? And what would we take from Tacoma Park?
They had 16 people come here to visit us.
Yeah, it was a great crowd. And I think, councilmember Siemens, I think there was also a resident of your ward who participated in that. So I didn't have personally the opportunity to participate since I was in budget meetings, but I understand from the staff who did participate that it was a very lively discussion and I had the chance to review the resumes of some of the folks who were here.
Thank you for not asking me to trade jobs.
Oh, I wish I could have been there, but they had a really great background and I think staff really enjoyed it and hopefully the two councilmembers who were able to participate did as well.
Did they, Ra, did they come here because we're near Sligo Creek?
I don't believe so. And councilmember Barry, there was no Guinness that was brought, at least not that made its way back to Suzanne's office, anyway.
No, but if the city had an alternative fuel vehicle, they could have used one of the guests to power it for the next year and a half.
Oh, good. Switching to much more mundane topics, which is streetlights. I think as councilmember Wright noted, it's very clear that there are some internal issues with Pepco in terms of some of their systems and processing streetlight outages. I will get the information out to the council tomorrow. But essentially, the online system that we have been encouraging folks to enter their outages in, apparently, I should say, is not the most functional system. And we have been given some alternative ways of communicating any outages to Pepco, so I will get those out to the council tomorrow to share with your constituents. One of the things that I did ask the residents of North Tacoma to do is that if they do choose to go ahead and enter those, send those to Pepco directly if they could copy Peggy Washington in my office as well as myself. We are trying to get an idea of what outage are being reported and the turnaround times that's involved with Pepco getting these addressed. That likewise does not have an automated way of getting a report back. So I'm trying to work with one of the Pepco reps where I can basically have Peggy kind of put it in a ticker system and then email a specific individual back so we can try to get an idea if they've been repaired or not without having to send an officer back out again to monitor that. So it is a fairly broken system. I think the Pepco representative, Mr. Daley, was quite candid about that and we'll just need to try some alternative means while they're trying to work out the processes.
Isn't the digital age wonderful?
Yes, I don't think there's this quite digital at all is what we found out, I think.
Three levels by hand.
Pretty much, yes.
They have a different approach to energy conversation.
Conservation. Easy for you to say.
Have the lights off and then they don't use any energy.
Did you have a question, councilmember Siemens?
Yes, Barb, I wondered if you had gotten any feedback from the county yet on their website that they use for reporting streetlight outages.
Ra, have you talked to anyone there? Yeah, I didn't have an opportunity last week, councilmember Siemens, I apologize with all the budget meetings. I know the county has responsibility for certain poles. I think the metal ones, not the wood ones. I'm not sure if the county's online system, we can find out how that's feeding into Pepco's system, but quite candidly, it doesn't appear that any of the online systems are working that well. And I think Mr. Daley has given me probably the contact information with the best folks to get things done quickly, but we can certainly follow up on that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess my question is less on how well the county system works, but why they've excluded us as taxpayers in the county.
I can ask that question.
Thank you.
Be happy to. The last item that I had, as I think the mayor just mentioned, the tour of the Green Belt Recreation Facility. Just a reminder that tour, as the mayor indicated, is on Saturday, March 29th. It will be from 10 to 12. I do have some information in terms of where everyone will be gathering and where the Green Belt representatives will be. And I'll likewise try to get that out to you tomorrow, as well as to the members of the Recreation Committee who've indicated a desire to attend. So that's it, unless there's some questions on any of these matters or anything else.
Okay, thank you. Next item is interviews for the Recreation Committee. And I see Alice Sims here. I don't see Peter Munger. Alice, if you want to come up to the table, if you're comfortable with the table, if it's, since it's just you, you can also stand at the lectern, but tables probably easier. Thanks for your interest in the Recreation Committee. If you can just give us a little flavor of what your particular interests are. And let me just also start off by saying thank you for all the wonderful work you've been doing with your service on the Arts and Humanities Commission and your continuing service to the community, even though you're not on the Arts and Humanities Commission anymore. I see you around here all the time, doing, putting up all kinds of exhibits and doing some great work.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure. I was on the Arts and Humanities Commission since its beginning and I have, am now off of that. I've attended the Recreation Committee meetings. I guess it wasn't an official committee so far. And I'm interested in it and of course, I'm interested in art programs and how the Rec Department interfaces with the art programs. And I would just like to, it seems an interesting committee from what I've seen. And I'd like to continue, we've begun working on some things and I'd like to continue with it. One of the things we worked on with art programs in other communities and reported on that and, you know, to see how we're doing and to see what we could do. And I'm interested in following up on that.
Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Alice, thank you very much for volunteering for this committee, but I also want to thank you, as the mayor said, for the many things you do around the city. Especially want to give you a big thank you from the residents at the Franklin Apartments for the many programs that you've helped with down there.
Franklin Apartments, yes.
Yes, really thank you. It's something they really appreciate. It's a bright spot in their life when they don't have many resources and you come in and help them to do something special in creating art in one way or another. And also wanted to thank you for the current exhibit in our gallery out here at the Community Center. For those who don't know, Alice was the driving force for the Ethiopian display that's out here now. And thank you for that. And I would just say that based on all the different things that you've done and the interactions you've had with the Recreation Department, I think you're an ideal candidate for the Recreation Committee and I appreciate your stepping forward to do that.
Thank you, thank you. One of the things I continually doing is to get the Franklin Apartment folks here in the Rec Department as well as the Ethiopian community into the Rec, into the Community Center, not necessarily just the Rec Department. We have an exhibit of the Franklin people in the senior room. So, you know, I feel like it's steps and steps and steps. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I waved you up to the table, assuming you're Peter Munger.
I am Peter Munger.
Good, because if you weren't, then you'd wonder what you were doing.
That's for sure. Wondering that anyway, bro.
So we were just talking with Alice about her interest in the Recreation Committee. If you want to just give us a little sense of your interest.
Well, I have a couple of perspectives, I guess. One is I have three children, all of whom are involved in some kind of recreational activity or another. My son was trying to lobby me for an arcade. He thought an arcade would be a good idea. I said, I don't know if the city really wants to be responsible for an arcade. But anyway, so I have the youth opinion to bring, I guess. And then I'm not a young fellow, so I have kind of an aging perspective as well in terms of what I think possibly we could do within Tacoma Park for, you know, older folks as well. And so I think there's a lot of, a lot of different audiences out here we need to look at and consider. And I think that Tacoma Park, from what I, you know, my time here in Tacoma Park has shown me is that there's a lot of activity, a lot of interest, a lot of different things going on. I think maybe we could move it a little further along and so that's what I'd like to get involved with.
Good. Questions?
I would just say thank you to Peter also for volunteering and we appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. Glad I can, hope I can bring something to help.
And a reminder, since we talked about it before you came in, I know you got the information, if you're available, for the tour to Green Belt on Saturday, the 29th. That should be interesting. And I think we've, this is now our third evening of Recreation Committee potential appointees and we have, I think, two more scheduled. And then we want to be able to start to get the official committee up and running. We have, you know, two more folks coming in next week. And then we'll probably see what we've got and potentially start making some appointments. So you should be hearing soon. Councilmember Barry?
Yes, on the topic of the very successful Ethiopian culture and art exhibit here, I wonder if there might be more opportunities like that with other groups in town, seeing art and culture as sort of access to recreation and to the other facilities here. Might this become a series of things where we could reach out to those groups in the community?
It might, yes, it's in the, we were talking to councilman Siemens about that, that there certainly are many other parts of the community that we could bring in and have another exhibit. So I really enjoy it. This one just fell into place. So we have to kind of cultivate some liaisons and some artists and see what we can, what the schedule, the exhibition schedule has.
I know it's a lot of work and we don't want to burn you or anyone else out, but it just, it does seem to have a lot of promise.
I, well, I enjoy it, you know, so we'll see. I have a few other things to do right at this moment, but yes, it's very near to my heart.
Great.
And if I can just add along those lines, councilmember Wright and I met earlier today with representatives from Council of Maryland who gave us some information on what Gaithersburg is doing, getting... is doing, getting arts and humanities involved and what they're sponsoring, and I'll give you my flyer if you can read Spanish.
Oh.
We can make a hand. I would just like to use this as an opportunity to solicit, you know, suggestions from anybody in the community that's watching for art displays here in the Community Center, and most especially, you know, displays of other cultures. We have the Ethiopian display here this month, but I know I've spoken with a couple of other groups in the city from natives of other countries, and so if anyone's watching and has ideas, please either contact Alice or me.
That would be wonderful, to have some people tour there of that culture to, you know, to help with this.
Councilmember Clay.
I just wanted to say that I think it was two weeks ago when my constituents resigned from the Public Safety Committee, and we talked at the time about inviting her to come to the Recreation Committee, and she did express an interest in applying for that committee. So I'm hoping that would make a second person from Ward Two. And there's a mistake on the, on the sheet where it shows this gentleman, Dallas Bertraw, is in Ward Two, and he is in Ward One. I'm Birch.
Okay. Good, thank you for pointing that out.
And thank you.
And the person that you referenced is, and she has contacted the clerk's office to schedule the interview?
We just talked about it a couple of days ago, so.
Okay.
She had been on the Public Safety Committee.
Right, right. Okay, so she can, if you can encourage her to contact the clerk's office and get the required submission in, she could be on the interviews next week if she's available.
Great.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up is our first work session item, which is a follow-up discussion of the use of Program Open Space and other grant funding, and I believe we have some staff here to help with that discussion.
Good evening. We prepared a package of information related to Program Open Space, bond bill, and other grant funding that has been, or is likely to be available to us for a variety of facility improvements in the city of Tacoma Park. And I wanted to go through those because they're, first of all, they're very important, and they're nice funds that we want to use appropriately. Second, because the facilities are in need of work. And third, because we do have some time constraints on several of these pots of money, and we want to make sure that we don't miss any paperwork deadlines. The information that I have presented covers a variety of facilities related to the Community Center. There are several options, the things that have been discussed either by the council, by staff, by citizens over the years, and I've listed them all here. There's the construction of a gymnasium. There's renovation of this room, the auditorium. There's an alternative to a gym proposal, which is a large multipurpose room for a variety of uses. There's interest in having a new facade for the library consistent with the new facade of the Community Center. Similarly, one for the Grant Avenue side of the Community Center and the new facade for the rear parking lot side of the Community Center. There's interest in having improved entrances at Grant Avenue and at the rear entrance of the building. And there's interest in milling and paving the rear parking lot and installation of a sidewalk to facilitate safe pedestrian passage past the building and into the building. In terms of park improvements for city parks, there are two items that are on our Program Open Space Annual Program. One is the new playground at Jackson Boyd, and one is renovation of a field at Checkier Park. There have been several other facilities that have been talked about. One is, should the city be involved and to what extent of improving the Grant Avenue turnaround in association with the new Tacoma Piney Branch Park renovations that will be getting underway? And, you know, what should those be? How should they be funded? One is potential improvements to the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, which is, the building is owned by Park and Planning. The facility is nominally run by Montgomery County Department of Recreation, but we operate it under contract with Montgomery County Department of Recreation. And it is a, it is a facility that's in, that's been determined to be obsolete in terms of its structure. There's interest, as you mentioned, Mayor Williams, on Piney Branch Pool and how we get that pool reopened. There's a couple other facility issues in the long term I just want to mention before we get into the specifics on the ones I've gone through. The city will need to renovate the Public Works Facility, and that's something that we need to do in the relatively short term, and we are including, proposing to include monies for a survey of that, a proposal for that. We had estimated in the CIP that replacement of the needed facilities at the Public Works Facility would be at the $1.2 million range. I think it was a seat-of-the-pants estimate, and we're suspecting it would be more. In the long term, we probably will need to replace the library structure at some point, and we want to just keep that on your radar screen. That's something that, as we look at over time, what we'll need to be doing. One of the things that I've included in your package is this chart. We needed to, I think, put something out to try to easily convey which funds are available, how much, and which projects they might be able to be spent on. Each fund has its own requirements and limitations. And under Program Open Space, which is something that we get every year and we never know how much we get till we get it, we have a total of $710,643 available to us at this time. Under the annual programs that the council has adopted of those funds, $382,000 has been identified towards, to building a gym. $62,437 has been identified to go for the playground at Jackson Boyd. $60,000 has gone, has been allocated to go to the field at Checkier Park, and $2,626 was to go to the auditorium. We have some flexibility in moving these funds among these or in justifying another project. We have paperwork that needs to go through on those. But I would argue that if you look at ways to distribute these, that you not just take $10 here and whatever there. If there's ways to, to limit the number of changes to these allocations to just one or two, that makes it much easier in going through the state paperwork. The Program Open Space funds, I believe in talking with the state representative that handles the paperwork for POS, could be spent on the gymnasium, the auditorium, a multipurpose room. Let me go back on the auditorium. The, we did have Barry Christie from the Program Open Space program here to look at the facility, and he saw the opportunities for recreation-type programming in terms of community plays and performances and summer camps and those kinds of things. It is important to him in the justification of it that there is a strong recreational component, because Program Open Space is for either recreation programs or for open-space programs.
So the determination was?
He felt that the improvements, as we talked about, what were being considered would be something that would help facilitate those kinds of activities for, for those kind of community recreational leisure-type programs in this facility.
Therefore, without having a final checkoff from them, the sense was that that use would be approved?
That's correct. Yes, we were very careful about that, and that's why we had him come, and he did want to see it. He met with a number of the staff, actually, I think, everybody in this room, all the staff in this room, and talked about what would be required. He did understand, for example, the need for a replacement HVAC system, which would keep noise levels down, et cetera, for performance-type activities. If you decide to just have council meetings in here, probably wouldn't justify the POS Other activities that could be, that could use the Program Open Space, obviously Jackson Boyd Playground, Checkier Park Field. In my opinion, POS funds could probably be used to some of the work at the Grant Avenue Circle. That would be a park-type thing. It would have to depend on how that would be designed and how it would interrelate with the new park plan. The New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center could possibly be a contribution to Montgomery County for doing the work, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Similarly, the Piney Branch Pool would be the, would be a recreational activity for which Program Open Space could be used. However, in talking about facilities that the city does not own, we can't just give our money to someone else. We can't just take our POS funds and give it to someone else. What we can do is we could have an arrangement, a formal memorandum of agreement, that would essentially give us some sense of ownership, some control over a facility, that kind of thing. It would have to be a fairly elaborate document. Or we could do what we've done before with some of the facilities, some of the park land in Pinecrest, which was we forego a certain amount of our POS funds, which then were returned to Montgomery County for the purpose to purchase the land in Pinecrest. So that would be the kind of arrangement, I would imagine, that would be appropriate for funds that would go to the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center or to the Piney Branch Pool, where we would forego a certain amount of funds with the understanding that an equal amount of funds would then be used by the county for that purpose. Of course, again, everybody would have to be on board with that. So I did try to go through and check with Barry Christie about how these things could be done, and he was very open with me about those. On the bond bill funds, bond bills are essentially grants from the state government through the state legislature and, oh, and then go back. On Program Open Space, the funds that are allocated for the various projects cannot exceed 75% of the cost of that project, and the city of Tacoma Park would need to partner with the other 25%. For example, on the Checkier Park Field, we have $60,000 allocated for an $80,000 project because we would pay the $20,000, so.
And if it were foregoing funds to the county, we would need to match?
We don't need to contribute anything. We'd be foregoing, so we don't have a match. They would need to match or do follow their procedures, but it would not be a burden on us. We'd be foregoing those funds and the requirements of those funds.
Thanks.
For the bond bill funds from the state legislature, there's a variety of kinds, but the most common one and the ones that we have are that those funds could not pay for more than 50% of a project, whereas other funds would need to match the other 50%, and you need to spend the match first so that, before you can draw down the funds from the state government. On bond bill funds, there's a set period of time for which you can use these funds. It varies a little bit about when you got them, but one of the key requirements is that you need to show that you have a match for those funds within two years. The two years for the $360,000 is up in a couple weeks, so we have to have a decision on how we're spending this $360,000 and that we have a match for those funds, or we will lose the $360,000. So it's been sobering for me because I've been going through all this, but we do, we do need to focus on what we would spend the $360,000 on. The $360,000 was for the Community Center. When we sold it to the state legislature, we talked primarily about the gymnasium. Everything that we can see does not seem to limit us specifically to the gymnasium as for the Community Center. I think that we have a good chance at having a fairly broad interpretation of that. So I just, I want to let you know. And the way that I prepared this chart is wherever there's open spaces, that's where some of the money could be spent in my judgment.
We can fill in a dollar amount in the white box.
You can fill in a dollar amount. Where there's a bunch of Xs, it's not eligible for that fund.
Two questions on the, on the bond funding? The, the match money?
Yes.
What are the restrictions on the source of the match money? For example, can you match bond bill funding with Program Open Space money?
I actually think we can. There's a hesitation often with matching it with state funds.
Because it's state funds matching state bonds.
State funds. And we've had that problem with, when state highway monies go in on a project, like with Carroll Avenue years ago. For Program Open Space, those are funds that are allocated to the counties and into the municipalities through a process that's more a formula. It's, it's a different, it's not a state agency's funds. So I think that, my understanding is that POS funds could, would be a match for that.
Okay. And the second question is on the bond bill funds and our obligation of those funds before the deadline. Can you give us a quick sense of what step we have to have gotten to in order to meet that?
I have to double-check. In the past, the way that we have done this is shown that we have funds identified in the budget for a particular use. And I think that, I think that we would probably have a good shot if, for example, we use POS funds, because those have already been allocated to us, and we've accepted them, and we could take some kind of formal action that would simply identify that this is what we're using, and we send that paperwork back to the state. I meant to double-check that today, but, but that's my sense. We do, on some of these things, I know Barb and I were going to actually go back and look through some of our budget documents, because we may have some of the matching funds already identified in pots for these various facilities. And I guess what I would urge is that tonight we go through and identify where you want it, and if there's any glitch in that, we'll let you know, but I, I think that we'll find a way to show them that. Again, the bond bill funds pretty much, in my opinion, could go to Community Center things. I think that it makes some sense to try to keep them up closer to the top of this list, given what are projects that are, something that's a doable project. And so, as, one of the things that we have been hearing from the state is that they do want the funds to be spent, so we need to ensure that this is a project that we anticipate moving forward. The federal EDI funds, the Congressman Van Hollen has been very helpful to the city, has managed to get us two sets of EDI, well, these EDI funds, and we'd had a previous one. It also simply references Communities, the Community Center. I think we have some flexibility in how those funds are used. And so those are ones, those are from a 2006 approval, so again, we'd want to make sure that those were moving. The timeline is not as essential on that. On another item, I don't know, Barb, maybe you want to speak to this. The city manager has spoken to President Jerry Starks of Washington Adventist Hospital on the matter of the $750,000 promised to the city.
I think the council's all aware that the Washington Adventists had pledged $750,000 towards the construction of a gymnasium. That was to be paid in five equal installments over a five-year period. At the mayor's request, I did contact Mr. Starks to try to explore if those funds could be used for some other purpose, if that's where the council so desired. What Mr. Starks indicated is that, first of all, that their commitment to providing that funding to the community was firm, that that wasn't a commitment that they did intend to honor. He said that while many in the hospital probably had more of a focus on, you know, wellness-type issues, that their broader focus was community development and trying to help the overall Tacoma Park community. I went through sort of a list of projects that have been kind of kicked around at the council level and asked Mr. Starks if he could comment on whether he thought their grant to the city could be used for those purposes. And as Suzanne indicated in her chart, obviously, the gymnasium was the original intent. He did indicate that he thought it would be acceptable to the hospital if their contribution would be used for renovating the room that we sit in for recreational or other community purposes. Similarly, any type of multipurpose room, I think there's a memo in the packet from the Recreation Department staff regarding that. I also asked him about the Piney Branch Pool. I think that question has come up at some prior meetings, and he indicated that that would likewise be an acceptable alternative to the hospital. One of the things that came up in my conversation with Mr. Starks, and you may have read the article in last week's article in last week's Gazette, and I did include a copy of the article in the supplemental information that was distributed this evening, is that Columbia Union College has talked about building as part of their facilities program. I can't remember exactly what they're calling it. It is a...
Grease wheel.
Sorry?
A grease wheel.
Right, but they also talked about building sort of a community facility geared towards kind of recreational and wellness purposes. That was obviously just, that is the top priority apparently of Columbia Union College. They obviously have land available for that construction, but they would be looking for, you know, partners to build it. But the thought would be not that they would just serve the college, but also the broader Tacoma Park community. Mr. Stocks wasn't sure what the city's interest might be in terms of partnering or otherwise being involved in that process. He and I did discuss maybe having the city participate in some way in terms of their planning, just because there might be an opportunity here for the community as a whole to be served. But he did mention that, you know, the council may wish to kind of explore that idea as well with Columbia Union College. I guess the bottom line is their funding commitment to the city is secure. They're just looking for some type of indication from the council in terms of how you would prioritize these different projects, and then we just need to let him know.
Was there any sense of timing, like some of these other sources of money, there's actually an urgency around spending it or we'd lose it?
No, he did not.
However, it has been identified that it would come in $550,000 installments. So it's not something that we would just get the bulk $750 upfront.
No, it would certainly be over a five-year period, and I think that has been the case from the very beginning. I would imagine if I were Mr. Stocks in the hospital, I would want some lead time if the city was planning to use their funding for any purpose in the very near future because obviously that's not a small amount of cash for someone to come up with on short notice. I think we'd have to work out the terms in regard to when we would actually receive those funds.
In addition to the chart, we've included a number of other pieces of information that I think you'll find of use as you go through this process this evening. We went through and identified the possible uses and expenses for a renovated auditorium. The question has been raised in the past, and very correctly so, about looking at operating expenses when considering a major capital project. The communications director and recreation director and public works director have all looked at kind of what it would take to, if this facility were renovated, to have it function. And they have identified, kind of estimated, kinds of uses in this building and then what it would mean in terms of staffing and other kinds of expenses for that. And this package is attached. In addition, the general sense of it is that there would be somewhere close to $30,000 in operating expenses for this facility if the use were, as is laid out in Attachment B. And what was done in part of the chart was to talk about the kinds of things that are already done and already supported in our budget and then identify kind of added-on uses given the facilities once they were renovated. Another thing that we were asked about, the auditorium, was kind of how does this compare or how this might be used compared to other facilities in the area. We've not done a full inventory of other facilities, but we did take two local uses. They're kind of competitors for the uses that we would envision in this facility and find out what the kinds of costs are for those rental spaces. So if an issue comes up about what kind of rental income we might consider, here's some good examples, and that's Attachment C. The recreation department also has been talking for a long time about if there's not a gymnasium attached to this building. We have relatively small rooms with just a flat floor for group activities, fairly large events like the Green Conference when you want to show the different kinds of products that you could use or make, those kinds of things. And so, they've looked at ways to not have to have the full amount of space of a gymnasium, but something that would suit those other kinds of purposes. And so they have a memo in this package. They did a little sketch based on one of the gym alternatives for a smaller facility. One of the things that I just want to note is that with a multipurpose room, it need not necessarily be rectangular, so there may be some ways that it works better attached to the building. So I want to let you know that that's something that our recreation department does see a need for in terms of the kinds of people that apply to use spaces here vis-à-vis the spaces we have available. In addition to the item related to Columbia Union College and the hospitals' funds, in the information that was put out tonight, we have a list of the Tacoma Park City Parks Playground renovation history and plans. And this goes through the various city parks, when the work was done to renovate them, what was done, and then what the likely schedule would be for continued renovation work over time of the parks. And Councilmember Siemens had asked for this information as you look through the park improvements. So that's the information in the package. Now we'd love for you to do some work here and let us know if you have some opinions about how we should be pursuing and making decisions on these facilities.
Before the council begins, I just want to add on to some of what Suzanne said. I just wanted to note that on kind of Chart A, it does show that an allocation of POS funds of approximately $62,000 for Jackson Boyd Park. If you look down the left side, however, the actual cost of the playground renovation is going to be much higher than what we had anticipated, and Daryl's in the audience this evening, and she can certainly address that. Suzanne had also commented on what was currently in the budget. The only two projects that are included in the adopted budget at this time relative to the POS funds or actually any of these monies is the Jackson Boyd Playground renovation and Jackie A. Park. As the council may recall, at the time you adopted the resolutions for the Program Open Space funds, we did include some broad language indicating that the required match, you know, would be made up of city operating funds or other monies, but because the council had really not determined what you wanted to specifically do with those projects and we weren't in a...
With the gym and the auditorium.
Right, weren't in a position to definitively move ahead. Noted in the budget transmittal message and some other documentation, the rest of those funds are not budgeted nor is any required match. So the only required match that's reflected in the budget is that required for Jackie A. Park and Jackson Boyd Playground.
And both of those are, when you add the two pieces together, are below what the project cost is estimated to be?
I know that's the case for Jackson Boyd.
That's a nod in the affirmative for both of them?
Well, for Jackie A., we have the amount and the match.
Yeah, there's a total of $80,000 in the budget for Jackie A. Park. That is the $60,000 in POS funds and the required city match. Daryl, you might need to help me out here, but there's the required amount for Jackson Boyd as well as the required match that we had anticipated, but obviously the project is going to be much more, somewhat more expensive than that.
And can we just get a quick, I think, I think I know why Jackson Boyd is, now has a higher price tag on it, but if Daryl, if the public works director can't put us above here.
We at least need to replace the chairs.
We currently have a bid, an advertised bid for the Jackson Boyd Playground renovation. The bid opening is next week, Tuesday, March 25th, so fairly shortly we'll have an answer on what we think the actual cost would be. I think it's currently scheduled on your agenda for April 14th for a contract award. So hopefully we'll have some resolution to that. Primarily, the major cost increase for Jackson Boyd has to do with making it ADA accessible. As the playground currently sits now, there's quite a grade, over 12% on one side of the street and 21% on the other. So it's at a convergence of two slopes. Currently, the playground was just sort of installed in place, making a little accommodation. One side's a little lower than the other, but the playground itself is actually on a slant over its surface. That is no longer allowed. You need to have a play surface of no more than, blanking on the amount. I think 5% slope is what you're allowed on the play surface itself. So accommodations are being made to change the grade of the play surface area and slightly expand it from what the current footprint of that playground is. And so that requires a retaining wall on one side and will require some raising of the other side. So, you know, anytime you're moving earth and groundwork and foundation work, it adds to the cost. There is another component, which currently is an ad alternate in the bid, which normally with an ADA accessible playground, you are required to be accessible from the street. Again, given the grade issues on both those sides, it technically would not be ADA accessible because of the grade that the car, for instance, would be parked on the street. So we do have an ad alternate to have a parking pad at the top part of the park, so a person requiring assistance would be able to park at a grade and access the park at the appropriate level. Again, that would be an additional cost to the playground. So a lot still remains to be seen, but largely the cost increases have to do with making it compliant.
I can just ask one question on this specific topic. That explains the Jackson Boyd inflation of the estimate, and I just wondered how confident we are. You know, quite often our projects come in at a higher price than what our estimates are. How confident are we with the $60,000 estimate for Jackie A. Park?
It's actually 80, I believe, and 60 for the POS funds.
I'm sorry, you're right.
20 for the other. The recreation department's been gathering some responses. The idea there is not a playground, but a field renovation and originally an irrigation system. So I'm thinking within those funds, but maybe they're...
In terms of the renovation of the Jackie A. Park Athletic Field, we could, it's really up to us about how much of that money we want to spend. We can sort of get the Cadillac renovation with sod and the irrigation system, or we can do a seeding and fertilizing and bring it on slower, and that would be cheaper. The irrigation itself, the system is about $10,000, and that doesn't include plumbing or tying it into WSSC, and I actually have no idea what that would be. So it's, I'm guessing that's about $15,000 for the irrigation. And then, like I said, we have, we had asked for three estimates, and we really just have the middle one. So I'm fairly comfortable saying that we could meet the $60,000. We could just, you know, decide to do less of an ideal renovation and still have good results.
Thank you.
And who do we schedule on that field in terms of users?
I'm sorry?
Who do we schedule on Jackie A. Park Soccer Field in terms of users?
Could we schedule it?
Who do we schedule?
Oh, well, the youth sports use it, the baseball and soccer, but we also get a fair number of rentals for people who rent the pavilion, but then also want to use the field for, you know, a family game or perhaps a special event. So, and then there are casual users who take their chances that nobody's on the field, but...
Do we have any restrictions on who we rent to?
Well, we don't allow alcohol, and we don't allow moon bounces. Beyond that, you know, most reasonable events are allowed.
But with irrigated fields, you also don't allow other things that drive stakes into the ground now. Is that true?
Tents, and that's true. That's true on our current fields. It's not that we wouldn't allow it. The fields that we have now, we are not, we know where all the sprinkler heads are, but we don't have a really good schematic, and I don't think Daryl has one either, about where the pipes underground run. We know where the sprinkler heads are. And I will say that it's not just driving stakes. We've had vehicles, especially if it's raining, we've had vehicles actually break the pipes on the fields too. So that's a downside of irrigating, that you do limit that kind of activity.
So, I mean, is like the Jazz Festival that uses Jackie A. Park might have restrictions on their...
Just on the placement of the tent. I don't believe that the entire park is going to be irrigated, just the athletic portion of it, say the soccer field. So there would be areas on the periphery that would not be irrigated. So it would just, it would just be a more organized, you know, we'd have to restrict exactly where the tents were.
I would mention that the Jazz Fest is exploring moving to Old Town.
Yes.
I just signed off on a permit request so they could see if they could get a street closure from S.H.A., so they've indicated a desire to move away from Jackie A. Park.
Councilmember Snapper.
Yes, I didn't just ask this earlier, but can you say a little bit more about the expiring bond bill funds?
Well, this, it's a standard process where, when you get a, when you get a bond bill or any of these funds, you file certain kinds of paperwork and that kind of thing. And it's been a standard process in the past that there's been longer timeframes, a lot more flexibility given recipients of bond bills for when they needed to get things in. The state has clamped down and shortened their timeframes. And so one of the things that's important is that within a two-year period of the award of the funds, that you show that you have the match. You don't have to have the project moving forward, you don't have to, you know, spend those funds right away, but you do need to show that the community is planning on using the funds and therefore is identifying where the match will come from. We don't have to expend the funds.
So that means we could just allocate $360,000 as a match, and then we wouldn't have to spend the funds?
That's right. Yeah, then we have to show that we would do that. Now...
Basically sequester our funds and assign them to that.
Right. The thing that we have done in the past is that, too, is that, you know, the city of Tacoma Park put a ton of money into the community center, and so when we had the application, we could easily show we put in more than our, more than that bond bill.
We have unallocated expenditures that would cover...
That's right. So there are, there are actually ways that I can write the paperwork back that look at this as a whole project and this as a continuation of the project. And so that is, you know, that's a standard way to do things. Nevertheless, it kind of depends on how we decide we're spending it and how kind of closely that is to what's been allocated in the past and what we intend on doing. So we're good at writing these things up, but we do need to say that we're moving forward on them so that I can find where the match is that can be placed in the paperwork and submitted to the state.
Yeah, and if I can just add that one of the difficulties we've had in the past is maybe not necessarily with the bond bill funds, but with these types of funds in general is, to the extent that we have indicated one thing and then kind of changed what it is so that we have to redo paperwork in some way to define that, is something that creates work for our staff and creates headaches for the state, and they really don't want to see that. They want to see, you know, file it, say what it's going to be, leave it there, do it, don't keep changing.
The other thing with the bond bill funds is that usually the way that they're handled is you're not supposed to have started the project that you're applying that thing for beforehand, and you have to like show that, who the contractor is. So you can, you can extend a project that's in existence, or if you have a new project, you have to identify a new match. But when you're somewhere in between, you know, you need to kind of pick which pot you're in and define it. So part of this is just our definition for them of these funds and how we're intending on matching them.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear about my question. That was all really useful.
That was the wrong answer.
I didn't praise my question clearly enough, obviously, because you answered a different question, which was really good. I mean, I appreciate that.
You seemed to know the answer.
The thing I'm questioning or interested in hearing about is, it's, you said it was going to expire in a few weeks, and my question really pertains to, why didn't you know about this sooner? You know, what's, why are we just discovering this now? Kind of question.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. I will say that one of my jobs is to keep going through the paperwork of all these different funds and identifying when does something coming up. And several months ago, I saw that this was becoming imminent, that we needed to get this, this section of the paperwork in. So part of the reason that I've been pushing and Barbara's been pushing for this discussion to take place is for that purpose. And so it's, you know, I didn't, you know, send, you know, red emails to you, but it certainly was the driving force internally that we needed to get this discussion to take place and to recognize that, you know, we did need some direction from council.
I might be able to.
It's useful to have a heads up that that's why we need to move forward on it, or just a piece of information to alert us to this that, so that we don't just say, you know, what's the rush? We could wait another.
I'm not sure where that exactly fell down, but I understand that.
I might be able to help you out a little bit there. It seemed to me several months ago, we got from you, because I think we asked, was a fairly complete list of all of the grants that we had, and there were expiration dates on them, I believe that was one of them. But it did happen about 12, at least 12 weeks ago.
Well, and also when we, when we look at expiration, we're generally looking, you know, we're generally looking at kind of the five-year window for bond bill funds. But this is kind of an intermediary step that I think we didn't highlight well enough, that we needed to get this intermediate, intermediate step.
Okay. In moving, if I could ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Berry.
If we move the discussion forward, is that, I mean, all of the things that you have here seem to be worthwhile and valuable, and certainly there are probably more things than there are dollars. And in a couple of the instances, like the auditorium, for example, we've already sort of moved quite far ahead with discussions and, and consultants and, and budgets and so forth. But I wonder if what this does is raise the question as to whether we should take a step back and look at all of these projects again, in a, in a very cold and hard-eyed fashion, and, you know, think of some very basic things like cost benefit. That is, you know, number one, of these different projects, how many of them are must-do, such as things that bring us in compliance with federal handicap access laws and regulations? Another would be, you know, how, how many people do each of these things serve? Are they the same people that we have served in the past and are simply updating or upgrading the physical plant? Or are there new folks that we hope to bring in, which I think was one of the arguments in favor of the auditorium, that have not been served in the past, but that we would like to serve, and therefore that would suggest that that project or projects be a little bit higher up on the list of priorities? It's not evident to me anyway, from looking at this list, whether we can make a cost-benefit test for any of them based on attendance, the kind of users that we would like to attract. It's not clear to me, maybe because I just don't know the programs well enough, but, you know, if I were being asked to make a decision about which things I would like to see happen, I think I would need that information to inform me as to which things would seem to be the most worthy. It's great to see the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center facility on the list, but again, from a user point of view and the complications of the county and city ownership management of it, I'm not certain that that would be very high on my list at this point, although it's in my area and I certainly understand the importance of having a facility on that side of town.
Sure. Those are very good questions. Some of these, I think, are, do have very definite benefits to certain users, and the council would want to consider that. Some of these have some political implications that you have to consider, and that's, that's, you know, the milieu that you are in. The New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, I put on this because there has been interest expressed in doing something with it, but like the Piney Branch Pool, it's not our facility. And, and there are other entities that have more money than we do, that may be more appropriate to kind of shoulder what needs to be done, but maybe there's something that primes the pump, or maybe there's just a direction to staff that we work with others on these things, and that's, that's fine. But I did want to make sure that, I don't want to present something that was already a limited list. I did want to show the facilities that we were talking about.
And I applaud that.
Darn, I looked down that way a minute ago, there were no hands. Now there's two. Councilmember Clay, followed by Councilmember Wright.
I'll be fast. I like them in this order. Jackson Boyd Playground, Jackie Park, the Auditorium, and Piney Branch Pool.
I just want to fully understand the matching question. So, because if we can use some of the funds that are here already, meaning we could use bond bill to match for open space or EDI to match for one of these others, that would be a big difference in terms of the total amount of money we actually have to spend and the amount of money that the city has to kick in. So like if you have to fully match, it looks like we have to match about, by my calculation, you know, $600,000 more dollars if you, if you did a 75% match on the open space money and a 50-50 match on the bond bill fund, which means in totality you have, you know, 2.8 million as opposed to 2.2 million or something like that if you add up all the numbers.
Yeah. And I do want to mention, and actually I'd forgotten this, I mean, one of the original concepts of matching the 360,000 on bond bill funds was the Washington and Venice Hospital Funds for the gymnasium. And so that's, that's a very helpful pot of money to consider in terms of the match for a variety of these different uses.
So we don't really need to come up with $600,000 to do the matching? We can use the other pieces?
I do think we have some flexibility. I mean, we've got our city funds, which obviously we're coming up into budget time, but we do have city funds. And as Jerry Starks has indicated, they're still committed to the $750,000. And we do have a memorandum from them, so that that could be something that we can submit as, as indicating of a match.
The second question I have has to do with the Jackie Park Field.
Yes.
And Deborah might be able to answer this most effectively. My sense in talking to Howard about the field, in particular his many years of having youth soccer experience and looking at fields, the level of, and I think, Mayor Williams also might recall some of our conversation with Howard, that the level of use that that field gets, if we were to re-sod it, for example, with what would be typically quite high-quality grass, that, that pretty soon, after a short period of time, we'd actually be back to a relatively poor field in terms of grass coverage. And so even though the more expensive option might seem nicer and do something in the short term, but it actually isn't as effective as maybe some other things like just doing the irrigation with, with some seeding and that sort of thing. So I just be curious if you had a perspective on that, because the last thing I think we would want to do is spend $80,000 on re-sodding the field and then in two years have a dust bowl again.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be $80,000 for the sod, but there is a little bit of re-grading that has to happen because it's sloped in such a manner. Most of the rain has eroded a lot of the soil, so a lot of the soil is down on the, I don't know what end that is of the field. So there has to be a slight re-grading, and that, that accounts for part of the expense. It does not have to be sod. We could get away with seeding. I mean, there is a longer downtime for, for generating new grass, but, but I think that it's definitely needed. That field is, is a mess and it's fairly eroded. And I think having a good cover of grass and an irrigation system, we have a much, and annual maintenance, which doesn't have to be expensive, re-seeding, you know, a few times a year like we do on the other fields, I think that we could have a much higher success rate than, than doing nothing.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm, I'm almost with Colleen. I'm auditorium one, Piney Branch Pool two, and the playground and the park, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm fine with those, but the maintenance part seems important. How, what common sense maintenance needs are, I go with that. But I do have one request for another column on anything that comes before me, and that is how much does it reduce our carbon footprint? I'm going to keep coming back to that every time I have an opportunity. How much energy will we save on, on any of these? How are we going to reduce our energy footprint in the next couple of years? So that's a column I'd like to see on every one of these. I know it's hard to guesstimate, but I'd like to see some guess. And then the other is, I see on attachment C, fees for the county school auditorium with stage. Does that relate to the county school auditorium next door? Is that, is that what these numbers reflect?
It's for a little school.
It's for any, any county school auditorium.
Okay. So it could be next door or somewhere else.
Yes, or the one at the middle school.
And, and I also, I'd like to hear more kind of strategic thinking about, we do have an auditorium next door. If it were used in the same way the multipurpose room were used, how much would it cost us every year? And how much, is there a comparison between how much it would take to service the debt to build a multipurpose room as opposed to having access to the auditorium with a stage right next door? That also goes for the gym. I'd like to see us think strategically, even though it may not be our highest priority to collaborate with the county to get access to the, to the resources we have right across our alley, right across Grant Avenue. It may not be the highest priority. I still want to see a comparison. Was it cost to build a new da-da-da? And what would it take to use the existing da-da-da right across the street? So I'm missing that, and I'd like to see that kind of analysis, strategic thinking and analysis in anything that comes before us. I don't know if you have any comments on that one, Deborah?
Well, the one comment I have is we continue to have an availability issue with the facilities, that none of them are available to outside groups next door until 6 o'clock. And that's, that continues to be the issue. In all of the schools, the priority, number one priority goes to after-care programs. And each of the schools has a contractor for an after-care program, and they have priority and they use the facilities until 6 o'clock. So it doesn't relate very well to the comparison on this auditorium because that's after hours.
No, I'm not talking about this auditorium. I'm talking about the multipurpose room that you proposed here.
I'll just make two comments to yours. Just in terms of carbon footprint, it's true, we don't have that kind of information. I do want to indicate, though, that the architects who worked on the proposals for the auditorium did talk, for example, about how much more efficient a new HVAC system would be for this facility. So that's one point. With the, one of the things that it's difficult for us is that we don't have good cost estimates for many of these things, such as a multipurpose room, which is what you would need to make that kind of ongoing cost comparison. And we're always set with the idea of, do we do a seat-of-the-pants estimate just by kind of asking around? Or do we actually allocate funds to get somebody to do a good cost estimate for us? And that's, and so some of it is a chicken-and-an egg kind of thing in terms of how we spend the funds.
And I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and then I'll go to Councilmember Stevens and Councilmember Clay. One thing I wanted to follow up on, somebody was talking about match and the, the wa money as a potential match, and remember our conversation earlier that depending on how it's done, the POS and bond bill funds can tend to be part of a match. And we have that other kind of hanging match of funds that the city has already expended, depending on how the, how the mix goes together. Another thing I wanted to point out in general was that from the point of view of where we are in the construction, potential construction cost curve, we were behind the curve with the construction of the community center. I have the feeling that we are potentially on the other side of the curve in terms of the potential costs for projects coming up in that the economy is in a different place, construction is in a different place, and there may be the potential for some opportunities to get better pricing as people are trying to keep their companies and their crews going. And I can say that from the other side of the equation, that there, you don't, you don't feel the same when you've got a lot of business and you can throw out a number at somebody, and if you get it, great, versus you sharpen your pencil and you say, I need that just to, you know, keep paying the bills and keep going along. So there's some opportunities there.
It would depend on how much is, is like steel cost versus how much is labor cost.
Right, right. But there are, there's a potential there that we haven't seen in quite some time. Also, some of these options here, like the library facade and maybe to a little lesser extent, the parking lot and sidewalk are kind of dependent on other choices being made first, because I don't think we would want to even consider a library facade if we hadn't had a little bit better determination about whether we were going to rehab or replace the library. If we, we wouldn't want to start doing parking lot and sidewalk repaving if we said, no, we really want to do a multipurpose room and we need to get the drawings for that. So that there are a number of these that just kind of fall down the list because of that sequencing. That being said, I would tend to agree on the, the choices that people have been talking about so far. I think we've, we've talked a fair amount about the auditorium, and that's a good place to go. I see the Jackson Boyd and Jackie Park projects needing to go forward, and I think as the, as we talk about those two with a little more detail on the bids, we'll be able to decide exactly how those should go forward. And I definitely see the opportunity for having, having available some carrot to go with our stick to the county on Piney Branch Pool. The clear message that I've gotten from the county council is that if this is going to go forward, we're going to have to come to the table with something. And I think we have some opportunities here to make that happen. And I think the immediate things on the, on the table that we have to address in the shortest timeframe are the assignment of the bond bill funds to get the paperwork in that we need to, and coming up with a sense of what we can do for the Piney Branch Pool because decisions on that, vis a vis the county budget, are immediate. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciated Councilmember Berry's suggestion that we take a step back and look at these rather large expenditures that we're contemplating. I think given today's economy and the fact that we're approaching very rapidly our budget process, and it's still uncertain how our budget situation is going to look this year. I know we're doing some adjustments on salaries to bring them in market rate. We've had some increases in insurance costs and some other increases. I feel really hesitant to just jump into all these things we'd like to do without getting a little bit more steady and systematic approach, such as Councilmember Berry suggested. If, you know, I, you know, there are things, lots of things on the list that I, that I would like us to spend money on, and a lot of other things I can think of that I would like to spend money on, not the least of which, and it isn't listed down through here, as you said, the public works facility.
Right. These, these funds can't go to that, though.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one of the reasons is, I had it on the list, but it just had X's all the way across, and we decided that it.
But for those, for those portions of this where we're getting other entities money to help us, but it's costing us money, it's a, it's a difficult commitment to make if we don't have that money because we want to prioritize some other expenditure. So I'm not prepared to just start numbering these things.
Councilmember Clay, and then Councilmember Wright.
I just wanted to say that regarding the idea for the multipurpose. I just wanted to say that regarding the idea for the multipurpose room in the place of where the gymnasium was going to be, one, I don't think it's impossible that we'll ever have a gym, so I guess I'm not sure I'm ready to replace the footprint with a multipurpose room at this point. Maybe I'll feel differently next year, but right now, I feel like we're on a pause and not like we've given up. And the other thing that I want to say is that, I guess I don't necessarily agree that it's impossible to get into the Piney Branch multipurpose room prior to six o'clock, because I think that in the last couple of years, we have been in the Piney Branch multipurpose room before six o'clock. And at some point, there was a decision made by the city staff. I understand what happened, is that the Piney Branch Elementary School decided that they wanted a licensed daycare provider, and the city is a recreation program and thus wasn't a licensed daycare provider. Am I getting this right, Barb? And we, the staff made a decision at that point not to rebid for the next round of the multipurpose room, because they didn't want to go through the process of becoming a licensed daycare provider, which is perfectly reasonable. But the conversations that I've had with Piney Branch Elementary School is such that they might rescind the requirement that their person in that facility has to be a licensed daycare provider. And I think maybe we should work with them on that issue, so that we could return to that building. I hear that a lot of people actually miss the city's operation of a facility within that school, and people who are in this facility miss being in the school, which, you know, says some things. But that's my take on it.
Well, I think that it's a little more complicated than that. I think when we built the community center, the idea was that we would have our after-school program here. That was a decision we made before the schools decided to go out to bid their program. In speaking with the staff that actually runs the program, it's essentially, the program took place in the multipurpose room, and we had access to the gym. Now, when we moved over here, we lost that access, but what we gained is access to a dance room, an art room, you know, the game room. And so a lot of our activities take place right here, and they're separated, which actually helps the staff and the kids that are trying to do homework. They're not in, before, they were all in the big multipurpose room, and you had a corner that you could be in. And it was really, programmatically, this is a much better place for the program, in my opinion. Now, having lost the large space, that's a problem. What we do is, the aftercare program uses the Tacoma Park Elementary School gym three times a week. We have access to that. But the other thing I want to mention is that, even when we did have our program at the elementary school, the schools do not permit mixed-age use of their facilities until six o'clock. So if we wanted to have a middle school program in the elementary school, that would not be permitted. It could only be elementary school-aged children. So it was very limited, even when we had access to it. And, you know, when I go back seven years ago, when I first came here and the city had decided that it needed a gymnasium, this building was planned programmatically for there being a gym attached to it. And what we've lost by not having the gym, we have a lot of little spaces, but we don't have large activity space. And that was the department, the rec department's feeling about having this multipurpose room, just something, and it would not just be for after-school programs. Many of you have been here for community events, and really, the biggest room we have is the azalea room. So it's kind of limiting into how many people you can welcome into the facility. It's about 50 people. So the thinking was that it would appeal to the after-school hours, but also to a broader range of larger uses.
Councilmember Wright.
I guess I would just first comment on that. It feels a little bit defeatist to take some of the things or limitations that the county school system right now is putting on as limits and say that they're given. And I think, you can say to me, well, Councilmember Wright, you're crazy, the school system's going to do what it wants, and we're never going to convince them otherwise. But I think we are at an opportunity where maybe we can restructure that conversation, particularly if we expand the conversation associated with the Piney Branch Pool, and if we're putting money into that situation. I think we might be able to have a different conversation about that. So maybe we can actually say, well, we're going to, we want to use this facility, and we're going to run mixed-use programming, and this is how we're going to, mixed-age programming, and this is how we're going to deal with it. So I, you know, yes, seven years ago, we sort of planned things based on having a gymnasium. We don't have a gymnasium now. And so I think we need to try and not accept those constraints as givens necessarily. So that would be the first thing. I'll try and put an order, because that's what other individuals are doing, on these items. I do feel really like I'm being forced to make a very sloppy decision, because I'm being told, you know, part of this money we have to decide on, and I don't know if it's two weeks or three weeks. And I very much agree with Councilmember Berry that it would be good to have more information about, sort of looking at, well, how much are these facilities used? Like, how much is Jackson Boyd Park going to be used versus the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center? Those sorts of questions. But here goes my best shot at it. I would put the Grant Ave facade, although costs are unknown, I suspect it's not an exorbitant issue as number one. You know, I think the individuals, I've said this before, who live over in Hodges Heights and spent a ton of time on what the gymnasium would look like from their side of the building, nothing that would have been...
Sorry, Councilmember Wright, do you mean on the back of the building, or on the Grant Avenue side, or both?
I'm not sure exactly what each of these means, because there's not a specific description associated with it. But what I mean is that when you come down from Grant Avenue, or the way the residents in Hodges Heights experience the facility as they approach it...
Yeah, I would see it as frankly, as both sides, in terms of the view.
Okay. I think we need to address the way that part of the building looks as people approach it and deal with it, particularly given that we're not going to build a gymnasium. I'm hopeful we'll get a gymnasium eventually, but I don't think we're going to build it in the next few years. I don't think we should build a multipurpose room there, because that really eliminates the possibility altogether. So I think the Grant Ave would be number one, Jackie Park would be number two, Jackson Boyd would be number three for me. I would actually put the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center high up there, but I would defer to Councilmember Berry on that issue, if he felt like that wasn't the right place to spend the money right now, because of the complexities with the facility and the different ownership. Auditorium four and the Piney Branch Pool five, we're not going to spend money on a gymnasium now, sorry to cross it off the list, the multipurpose room, I don't even know how to factor that in, because I have no idea what it's going to cost. I could use all the money, or the library facade, I agree with, it doesn't make much sense to deal with that. Parking lot sidewalk issues don't seem to be a priority to me. And I think the Grant Avenue Circle, it's still unclear sort of when that project is going to start to me around the redo of the parks, I'm not even quite sure how to prioritize that in here. So that's my order of how I would...
Anybody want to weigh in on order, and then we've got to wrap this up for this session of it to be revisited.
Well, that's the question. Could you give us a little, you know, what are the next steps here? What do we...
I think...
I have some preferences, but...
I think what would be good for tonight is additional weigh-in on the Piney Branch Pool, possible use of funds. I believe it's, I want to say, is it this Wednesday? When Councilmember Clay and I, or is it next Wednesday? This Wednesday? I don't think that's on my calendar.
Definitely not, like the one that was last...
Yes.
Then you want to look for a commitment to the pool for the use of the program open space money and the WAM grant as a match? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And we don't have a figure on what that's going to be yet, but at least if we can say, yes, we can bring something to the table. And we're hoping to get the figure on the cost for separating the pool area from the rest of the school, and what we might be able to get in return for bringing some money to the table, maybe in terms of how we might be able to get out from under the ICB on that.
And for the rest, we would follow Councilmember Berry's suggestion of a systematic approach?
If I might interrupt, I'm sorry. I think that, given the different kinds of funds and things that are here, in terms of what the bond bill can be used for, whatever, I think your choices are pretty much limited, probably at this point, to the auditorium or facade issues, given what I've heard from the council members. And if you are going towards the auditorium, I think there are ways to come up with the matches for that, with both the EDI funds and perhaps some of the WAM money. So that's something that is a workable application. If you're looking at a different kind of use for the $360,000, I need to know that tonight.
Well, it seems... I, that's one of the reasons I was following up earlier on those questions, because I do think we need to come up with a way to access that $360,000 and not risk losing it in a few weeks. And so I would definitely support whatever creative method we have of making sure that that gets used properly. And I agree thoroughly with Bruce about the strategy for the pool. And I would hold off on the multipurpose room, because I have strong feelings about gymnasium. I think we need to keep plugging away at trying to get a gymnasium. I just, I don't see how the, as Deborah just said, this building and our, the whole, a lot of people in the city are committed to a gymnasium. And yes, we're in a pause, but I think we need to come back to it, so I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes that.
So then maybe we should commit the money, the $360,000, to the gymnasium with the appropriate matching from the other EDI?
If that's what you want to do, please be aware that there's kind of a five-year framework on the bond bills, and that means that you would be committing to spending the money over the next three years for the gymnasium.
Nor do I.
I mean, we don't know exactly how much money we're talking about to bring to the county, but it's not the $190,000.
No, in fact, I would recommend keeping that amount, the amount down.
Yeah.
Yes. When I looked at things that were on the list, I saw the great unknown is the cost of separating the use.
That's right.
And it seems like there's a certain rationale behind saying, well, that is a change and a benefit, and it makes that facility more available to the community. Depending on what that number comes back, that's a potential identified piece that is greatly to our benefit.
I was just going to say, it seems like there's enough money to do a lot of, like, if you include all sort of the WAM money, and as we can't have it all at once, but there are, we could either plan to do it over a few, some of these things over a few years, or you can always use the WAM money to finance.
Right.
If you know you're going to get the revenue, you could finance in a pretty low interest rate right now, actually. So it does seem to me that if you looked at the different numbers, you can actually probably do most of this. If you talk about the auditorium, the facade improvement, the two parks, the Piney Branch Pool, I think there's probably enough money there to actually do all of it.
If I can suggest that a good stopping point for this evening might be to say, it sounds like we've heard general interest in assigning the bond bill to the auditorium. We need more information for how that would match and how we could use the other pieces to go with it. We have the Jackson Boyd and Jackie Park in the CIP. Those will be coming to us in a very short time. And there's agreement that we have a piece of something for the Piney Branch Pool, and that we go forward with those pieces and identify maybe some, for the facade pieces, the unknown cost to get a sense of what those are. And that's our next step for coming back.
Next, just one question. When do we find out, I know we don't know how much, but when do we typically find out about open space money each year?
It's usually May or so. I think it seems...
Yeah, it's usually, I think, in May, because my rec election, the council typically passes a resolution identifying the project for which you want to spend the monies around June, I think.
Yeah, beginning of June. And I'll tell you, it is absolutely unpredictable. The amounts go all over the place.
I just bring that up only because we can use the money for facade stuff after the building, but we can't use the open space money.
Right.
As far as use is concerned, my guess is, is that the fields probably get the greatest use, the largest number of people with all the sports teams. It would be good to have those numbers. And second, probably the next largest would be the, okay, so the fields, and then probably the next one would be the swimming pool, though it would be, I mean, in terms of the numbers that have shown up here over the past six months or so, one gets a sense that it would be heavily utilized. And then I think the New Hampshire Rec Center would probably be the third. And then the auditorium, again, because of the potential new users that we would have, it would not be necessarily larger than the fields, but it could easily come in ahead of the pool even, and certainly ahead of the New Hampshire Rec Center. But it seems to me that those would be my priorities without knowing the numbers.
Any other comments? Is there something else you need?
No, I guess the, I think what I want to do is brainstorm a little bit with Barb and get back with what I think I've heard this evening, and allocate some funds, and just make sure that that's kind of hitting what there's agreement with this evening, and then identify what the remaining funds are for your future discussions.
And you can get us something in the relatively short term as you work on that, not waiting for a packet for an agenda item, so that we've got the opportunity to give a little feedback.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Two things, just real quick. I think it would be extremely helpful to get some usage projections, such as Councilmember Berry has requested. And the other thing is, I will remind you of a comment I made the last time we talked about this, that I'm very reluctant to vote to support any expenditure of the program open space money for anything but the gymnasium until I hear how we are addressing the need in the city for gymnasium programs.
We will take a short break. We will reconvene at 9:30 on the clock in the back of the room.
I have nine twenty, yeah.
Yes, but we're going by that one.
Inform this committee's work?
I don't, I don't have that. They certainly wish to apply in the next Certificate of Need round, which I think is in August.
I believe their site plan reviews and everything are scheduled to be heard by the park and planning in later this spring. And based on my last conversation with Mr. Stocks, he indicated that they would be filing their Certificate of Need application in the fall cycle, which I think it may be, is around September.
And do we have any indication on the Certificate of Need process, whether we've gained standing?
I don't know.
I have not heard anything back from the city attorney, though she had filed a letter with the appropriate state agency asking for an amendment in their regulations that would also not only recognize the site of the future hospital, but also the jurisdiction where the hospital would be relocating from. But I don't believe she's heard anything.
If it's, if it's appropriate, might it be time for a follow-up letter just to kind of say, hey, you got it, we haven't heard anything?
Sure, I'll ask Ms. Silver to send one.
Okay, thanks. Questions, further comments? I also like the, the language in the third from the bottom where it says the committee shall brief the council quarterly or as needed. I think that, that timeframe will expand and contract depending on where we are in the process. But I, I think it's good to set up that expectation as well for members so that they understand that. Okay, it sounds like we are ready to go forward with that. So we will do that, if your recollection is correct, next week. Can you see that on there for sure? Doesn't look like it's next week, but we will get that on.
And we'll go ahead and make sure that the newsletter item gets included.
Okay. Good, thank you. Next item is discussion regarding a March 19 public meeting on the Tacoma Metro. And we have some questions that we need to give feedback on. Barb, did you want to?
Sure.
Connie, where is?
Yes, I think as everyone is well aware, there will be a public meeting on Wednesday evening regarding the planned EYA development at the Tacoma Metro. On Friday, I had forwarded to the council an email that I had received from Matt Larson of Justice and Sustainability Associates, who will be facilitating that session. The questions that are contained in the packet item basically stem from that email from Mr. Larson, and he was hoping to get, for us to get direction from the council this evening. He obviously wants to make this session most informative for the council that he can. In very broad terms, I think what he was hoping to get from the council is a consensus on what exactly it is that you'd like to learn from the public at the workshop. Put another way, what are the objectives? So that he can basically be clear about that with anyone who is in attendance. There's also been, I think, various council discussions in terms of the exact nature of the discussion, whether it would be more kind of a traditional public hearing type approach, or to what extent the council actually wants the session to be actively facilitated by Mr. Larson. Certainly, I think last week there was some fairly extensive discussion both by the community and by members of the council regarding the survey instrument that was included in the newsletter insert. I know Suzanne, you might want to just make a few comments in terms of what has been coming in.
Yeah, I'd just like to let you know, we've been receiving those questionnaires, the completed questionnaires from the community. We've gotten about 120 online surveys completed, about 100 filled out forms completed. Most people have their names on them, or they came as a group, like Victory Tower had collected them, so they didn't have to each have postage, and they delivered those. The questions, the information that's been provided, I think, has been very interesting in that when it's on the online form, there's a little more room to write comments. Most people have written a paragraph or two for several of the different items, very thoughtful. When it's the paper copy, many people have attached letters to you about their thoughts about the site, or pasted on their answers, that kind of thing. So there has been a lot of time and attention from a number of members of the community, and, and you would recognize many of the names of the people that have sent things in. I will say that, you know, as has been mentioned all along, these are not statistically significant, kind of not statistically accurate type of a survey. And so, you know, taking what 51% of the people say isn't really the approach that I would recommend that you take. I did note that the vast majority of the responses have been from wards one, two, and three. Wards four, five, and six, we've received very few responses from. At least 90% of the people have indicated that they're Caucasian, and since we're a majority non-white city, I think you can identify that it's not perhaps a representative sample. Nevertheless, I think when you, if you decide to review the surveys, they do run a camera of opinions, and except for a sentence that has been suggested for some people to send in, the information has not been repeated. You can tell the people put a lot of thought into these responses. And so it's clear that people did want to share their opinions with you on the surveys. So I do want to indicate that those are there, those surveys have been passed on to Mr. Larson for compilation and for uses you see fit.
I think what was originally envisioned was, I think, two things. One is that individuals could complete the survey and return it to the city. I believe the deadline was March 23rd.
Yes, that's right.
Is that correct? And then I think the second issue that I think specifically Mr. Larson was hoping for some direction on is, as he originally envisioned it, besides people being able to send it in, who may or may not be able to attend the session on Wednesday evening, is it was his original thought to actually have the survey available on Wednesday evening and to give folks the opportunity to fill it out and turn it in at the conclusion of the session. So I think he was looking for some indication from the council if that was something that he should still feel free to do, or if he would rather he not do that. So that's a specific question, obviously.
Yeah, and if you opt for that, the proposal would be to have just copies of the questionnaire itself with a blank other side of the paper, so that people could write additional information, because that is an issue, is how much space there is to write.
And I think the last question that Mr. Larson was hoping to get some direction from the council on is, who did the council want to answer questions raised by the public at the meeting? I think there was, actually, I think, an email that I received when I came in this morning from Councilmember Wright, and I did send a reply back, based on my conversation with Suzanne, as well as some email traffic with Mr. Larson. I think the specific question that Councilmember Wright posed was, was it appropriate, or was there a role for a council member, when a member of the public got up and voiced his or her opinion, for a council member to maybe ask some clarifying questions, just to make sure that the council really understood what the sentiment that the individual was trying to convey? As I indicated in my email response this morning, I think collectively Suzanne, Mr. Larson, and myself all feel that it would be appropriate, and very helpful actually, for council members to, you know, ask any clarifying questions that they thought was necessary, just so the council had a sense of what the individual was trying to convey. I think in a nutshell, I think those are the specific questions.
But the other aspect of that fourth bullet did also concern whether Mr. Larson should answer technical questions about the DC approval process and that kind of thing, and he does not feel comfortable doing that. He feels that his emphasis should be on the process. So he did, he did respond with that information as well in the email to you.
Right. I think this is kind of a tangential issue. If there is sufficient time this evening, I know there's one other agenda item and it is getting late, is we do think it might be helpful for the council, and particularly for the mayor, in terms of a scheduling agenda matter, is when this matter might come back before the council. This was obviously an, an opportunity for the council to hear from the community and to try to gather some additional information. But in the very near future, I think both staff, as well as the city attorney, you know, would like to get some sense of when the council will next take this matter up, both in terms of formulating a legal strategy, and I think just from a community standpoint, trying to bring some resolution to this matter, and for the community to have a sense after receiving the various thoughts and comments from the public, what is the city's official position going forward.
And I'm not sure that's a question we're going to be able to answer tonight, but I think it's a question that we'll be able to answer better after Wednesday night and after getting information from surveys, is, if that's what we're going to do.
I would urge, if, if you are able to, to determine approximately when the council might decide to vote on a resolution of a position, that may be useful information to share with the people on Wednesday night. I don't know if you'll be in a position to do that, but, or at least some sense of the timeframe, because obviously people, you know, they, they're anxious that things get done, and at this point, the information that we provide is that the, the direction from the city council is to emphasize transit access, and that that's our sole position.
I'm sorry, that's our sole position, as it stands right now?
As it stands right now.
Okay. Councilmember Robinson?
I think that's crucial, that, that is the state of affairs right now, that our, the council has, has supported transit as the focus. There have been other areas of focus in the past that the public has promoted through various plans that have come up, a couple of plans that have come up. So it seems to me that whether we want to expand that scope or not is, is a question, and I think that's reflected in the survey. And I also, and that, that ought to be discussed amongst ourselves, and also perhaps in the meeting, from a strategic, I'll use that word again, strategic perspective, what do we gain and what do we lose if we expand the scope? As far as that night, the night after tomorrow, it might be helpful to have some kind of a timeline map of some sort, graphic, with some historical, putting some historical context in there, showing where we've been in this process, and where we, where we are going. Because if we're going to come to some conclusion or state of mind, that will be helpful, and it will be helpful for the public as well, I would suspect. I'm, in some ways, at a loss as to where we are, but I have some inkling. And as far as the survey goes, I am of a mind to consider what comes in on the survey and to, and to allow it to be one of the tools on that night, even though we, I'm clear that it's not statistically accurate.
And if I can just give a quick sense of my thoughts on a timeline for the, for the council process, if it's helpful to give to people. I'm certainly, this is not anything I've given a lot of thought to, because my sense was it still needed to be informed by what we still need to do. But if I had a general sense of what we were trying to do, and dealing with other, other organizations' timelines and processes, and not trying to let this thing drag on forever, even though it already has dragged on forever, my sense is that we might be looking at trying to wrap up this, this stage, this phase, and move on to whatever is next somewhere in the one to two month timeframe. I'm not sure we'll come to too much conclusion before a month, but I wouldn't want to see it drag on much longer than two months. Councilmember Snipper?
Just a, a couple of suggestions on the survey, as someone who does surveys a lot. I think what makes a certain amount of sense is to treat the surveys as a way of getting the range of comments, and to skip any numbers, percents altogether. Because the, any numbers are going to be useless essentially, and misleading. But the scope of the comments might be useful, so if somebody has a novel idea, that's, that sort of thing. I don't actually think that much new is going to come out. And then, as I understand it, our options are very limited at this, at this point, so the, it seems to me the function of the meeting is mostly to let the public hear that, that our options are very limited, and that, and hear what our options are, and then to let them, that's the nice way to put this, to let them vent, I guess is the Tacoma Parkians like to complain about the situation, about which we can do very little, if that's fine.
Let me just observe that some would take issue with the sense that we can do little.
Well, what can we do?
I can identify the next person.
That's what I thought.
I don't see a hand up. Councilmember Wright?
I guess I'll go in a reverse order to the questions, because I find them the easiest to deal with. The first is, who does the council want to answer questions raised by the public at the meeting? I just think it should be the person who can actually give them accurate, correct answers. So if that's Matt, if he knows his stuff and can give accurate and correct answers, great. If that's a city staff person, great. If it's not, we need to figure out who it's going to be. I, I'm very troubled by the third question, because I can't endorse the survey, not only because it's not statistically accurate, but because I think the survey questions are leading. And so it's very problematic to me that someone who might have limited information about it, or have only the information that was in the brochure, or even come to the, the meeting and, and gain some information, but I think it's a complex issue and hard to master in, in one evening or short presentation, and the way that the questions are phrased, I think it leads them to a sort of certain, has a tendency to lead them to a certain answers. At the same time, so I can't endorse the survey, I do encourage people to come and talk. At the same time, I don't want people to feel like they spent time and energy on filling out the survey, and that we're not going to even think about what's said in it. So I do appreciate Councilmember Snipper's comment, I think it's, you know, a very interesting way to think about it, that it might be something I know we haven't thought about before, and so it might be more about the range of comments as opposed to statistically the comments. I definitely want the meeting to be facilitated, I think that's, it's hard to have a discussion with however many, you know, it's probably 30 people at least there. It's really hard to have a discussion without that meeting being facilitated. And I think that's probably why we're paying this money, that there's certain tricks and, and techniques in the way that a facilitator leads a meeting that, that really enables a large number of people to have a discussion without it delving into entire chaos, but also not just being a series of public comments. And so I, I think that's the point of having a facilitator. And in terms of what the council would like to learn from the public at the workshop, I think our options are somewhat limited, in the sense that I don't think we, I think we, our main power is still the ability to comment on transit-related issues, access, ADA accessibility, future growth around transit. I think for us to spend a lot of time on having the public think that we're going to do something about recreation at that site, or is unrealistic. But I do think that once you get into that limited area of transit, we do have options to think about. And I would frame the options as, you know, continuing to fight for what we think is truly just and right at that site, and, and that may involve a lawsuit. It's sort of hard to tell what our legal options are related to that, because we don't, the FDA hasn't said anything about it yet. So, and that combined with active participation and activism by residents in doing thing, you know, direct action type activities, is one option, sort of. And then the other option is to, to negotiate with EYA and WAMADA to, to change the plan a little bit. And I think we need to hear from the public about those two. I, I definitely lean towards the first that I mentioned, but I think we need to hear from the public about, about that. Because if we negotiate, and at least in the conversation so far, that with EYA, they don't seem very willing to change much related to the plan, so it's a little bit like putting lipstick on the pig to me around negotiating, so. But I, that's what I hope to get out of it, a sense of what, what the public wants related to that. I'm inclined one way, but I'm, as always, open to, to thoughts on that.
Other comments? I'll just add that I've heard from a couple of people who were very excited to be able to return the survey, and most of those people live within a couple of blocks of the metro and have been engaged in following this from the beginning, and they were very happy to provide extensive comments. So I do look forward to seeing the range of comments in those surveys, and I think we all recognize the, the ability to extrapolate numbers and conclusions from those, but I think the comments will be helpful. And I, and I think Councilmember Wright is correct in pointing out that any input we can get on, from, from the attendees on, helping us understand any possible avenues for, I'm going to change my comments over here, so maybe I won't describe this to you, to understanding any, any better options for, or sentiment toward giving input into the process with EYA and the district to try and get the best outcome possible, kind of in, in dynamic tension with Sue the bleep, will be helpful. And I agree that facilitating that, that discussion will be very helpful. Any other comments? Suzanne, do you have whatever you need to get back to Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you very much. I, you know, I, I think the public wants to know what you want to hear. Thank you very much.
Okay, then the final item is legislative update. And I believe that is your third, your third or fourth half for the evening?
When I saw the agenda, I couldn't believe it. Everything but the rec interviews is me. Let me just pull my things here.
I have a relatively short item on the legislative update. Other than the fact, as Mayor Williams mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that he sure did his diligence this week at the Annapolis.
That was definitely an overtime day. I started out with a two and a half hour meeting with Councilmember Barry and a number of folks in the CDA, and had a brief, I don't know, I think there was an hour between the time that ended and the time the city attorney and I headed to Annapolis, and we then proceeded to cool our heels and watch from inside the row the most bizarre committee hearing I have ever seen in Annapolis.
Well, you know, I, I heard from you, I guess it was secondhand, that you thought that you'd be in and out in the, in the hearings.
I did.
Given what you'd been told. And I, and I remember remarking to somebody, gee, they're completely unpredictable, I hope he's got a deal there, but I didn't, sure didn't wish you'd be there till, till the evening. And nevertheless, one of the things I went on the website today to double check how these various bills, especially the ones you were testifying on, the sanctuary city, the attacks on sanctuary city status, and the citizens, was it the citizen right act?
Yes, yes.
They've been deemed unfavorable by the judiciary committee since that time.
Yes, there were, there were four bills, 735, 885, 1101, and 1232 that all crashed.
And, and everything that I've been able to understand is, you know, there might not have been some sympathy on the committee, but Tacoma Park looked really good compared to the, to the other people at, at the tables. And I give a lot of credit, obviously, to the mayor for being there and for making the connections with the MML, and also to our city attorney, who, who wrote a very strong statement that showed how ridiculous these, these bills were from a legal perspective. So that's, that was just wonderful to see that news. Now, once something's unfavorable, it can still go forward, but it's very unlikely, and it's, it's essentially, they've essentially been defeated, and I'm very pleased with that.
Yeah, I think that the, the only, the only question is on the senate side, and one of the bills was withdrawn, and my understanding is that when it's withdrawn, it's not dead.
Right. No, it can come back. One of the, that was the police reporting one, which we had problems with, it has been withdrawn. There's a number of other bills that are kind of in the same vein, which there's been no action on yet. There could be action on them, but my sense is that we've kind of gotten over the hump, and so most of this is, is going in a good direction for us. I feel very good about that. I don't have, when I've looked through some of the other bills that we've expressed interest on, there's one from, the Councilmember Robinson raised to me that I, I forgot to double check on. But other things don't have action, so I don't have any new information to report on other issues. Is there anything else from the state side?
I, I know that, I had a number of emails back and forth about the, the telling of cars bill on annexation of properties that go over the municipal line.
Yeah.
And there were amendments proposed to put a sunset on that of, I think, three years for action, so that it wasn't just out of an item.
I'll double check on that, I didn't say that.
And I haven't seen anything that indicated any final action on that, but I think that one was moving forward.
Okay. On the different, well, and the, the session's coming to a close, they're getting down to the, they don't pay attention to these bills so much anymore, you know, it's the budget, is what they're focused on. And so, over the, over the next two weeks, they will be living and breathing budget issues. And so I'll double check on a couple of these items, but these things, either they're going to move or they're not going to move, and, but most of the focus will be on budget issues. And some of those have real impacts to us, so it'll be very interesting to see what, what comes out of that.
Yeah, and the, the communication I had from MML today was that the legislative committee meeting for this Wednesday had been canceled because there was nothing we needed to do. So I think at this point, it's tracking and being ready to give input if necessary, but seeing what happens with the budget.
The only other item I want to bring up is, I haven't looked at it yet, but the county executive issued his operating budget today, and budget hearings are scheduled for April 7th, 8th night, or 10th. On those four nights, they're at 7:00 PM. On April night, there's also a 1:30 in the afternoon item. Generally, we try to get on an early agenda, usually from the mayor's schedule, and Bruce, we haven't coordinated on that.
Right.
Do you want to be?
And this time, Ms. Hairston will be sure that we get on the list.
Yes, I'm sure Mrs., I'm sure Ms. Hairston is going to check and double check and triple check your name. For those who aren't aware, what was the capital budget?
The capital budget.
I duly signed Mayor Williams up. I got a call back from Delphine Hairston, who's a wonderful county employee, who sets the agenda, that what, where Mayor Williams was on the list, I gave him the information, he shows up, he's not on the list. And fortunately, the council president, I gave some deference to you and allowed you to testify, but it, it made it look like Tacoma Park had messed up. When I, you know, Bruce sends me any, leaves a message, I wasn't on the list. And I checked with Ms. Hairston, and she was just embarrassed to tears, because she remembered doing everything, and then somehow she didn't write it on the list. And so she says, that will never, ever, ever happen again. And I'm sure she'll double check. Do you have, do you know now if one of those Do you have, do you know now if one of those states is good for you, or?
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. I do want to get it up on the list.
Yeah. And I'll remind my colleagues that this Thursday night is the MML Montgomery meeting with the county council, starting at 7 with dinner in Rockville, and that is the time when we get to talk to county council members about the budget and any particular concerns we have. And so any information you can get us on what's in the county executive's budget that might be a potential topic to bring up there would be good. And if we know it, I don't know, maybe tomorrow, we can get it to the, the chapter to get on the list for addressing.
We'll look at that.
Good. Questions? Comments? We're turned.